So. Speaking of. What is our contingency plan in the case of?
How do you like diesel fuels?
Well, but I'm thinking of our participants online without.
Well, for yeah, for tonight, if if we lose connectivity to the outside world, we lose a forum and we would just end the meeting.
Okay.
And pick up at the next agenda.
Okay, everybody hear that? You lose power, Ron or Alex, I think you're the only ones online. We just end the meeting. Um, okay, so I I just wanted to. I guess I was I already said, but. These because these comments, they were good representations in the discussion, but because they're not ascribed to certain to individuals who said them.
Right.
It gives the impression that this was all, you know, agreed upon by the planning commission. Whereas actually, if you read them carefully, there are contradictions within them, so.
Your disclaimer is great.
Yeah, so I just added that. But I appreciate the detail of those comments. That was well done. Think it was how they could do this. And I had just added some. Clarifying. That's for us. Everybody okay with this that you can see on the screen? Let's go down. Just a quick minutes thing that spelling out. Those acronyms is helpful. Good. Matt's machine is lightning fast, as you can all see.
I want to do too much.
Speaking of lightning. Yeah. Hopefully, people have had a chance to. Read this. There was a comment up there that.
Oh.
Yeah, I didn't know what lifespan of complexity. Where is the town in its lifespan of complexity?
I think I think that. Where we are in what I would call that lifespan of complexity is. We're getting more complicated. Right? So Williston, in terms of the services it needs to provide, the way its infrastructure is interconnected and the maintenance liability and the services the town provided are. Are all becoming more complex and interrelated and more interrelated to the region. So where is the town in that arc and where does it go throughout the span of this, you know, if this is a vision out to 2070? Thinking about all the other things in town that continue to have to grow and change. And then I think the question about the development community in terms of. What are people building in Taft Corners now and what is the local development community capable of planning? Financing and all of those things because that has changed just in the last. And will likely continue to change. So I think recognizing that we're somewhere on that continuum right now and then we're dealing with a vision that. Goes further down along that. And if it was Taylor who said some of that, Taylor, you're welcome to. Tell me if I'm off. Or clarify.
Yeah, maybe if we can just clarify that phrase.
Where is that phrase in?
It's in the second top bullet. Oh.
I'm just trying to highlight it, sorry. Right on the top of the screen there, Chip, and where is the town, its lifespan of complexity?
I guess I think the problem is lifespan. It sounds like complexity makes it sound like complexity just ends at some point.
On the continuum of.
Yeah, that's or even like, what is the degree of complexity in Williston's? You know, economic residential, I mean, like specifying what we mean here. Yes, our spectrum is great. If all we get is the minutes approved, I guess that's.
This is the kind of situation where the. We had took up greenout power on their power wall thing. So we have power walls that flips over to battery backup without any. You don't even know what happened. Because it's a micro grid. And it'd be nice if the town could do that instead of having a generator.
So this this follow up sentence kind of illuminates this for me further, which is the very few mixed use developments, especially mixed use buildings. It's interesting that Brian and Al are here with Cottonwood Proxy because they're currently building a building that has commercial on the ground floor. And residential up above, and that's a real rarity in Williston. It's a really new thing in Williston. And I don't know, Brian or Al, jump in, but. When you go to finance something like that or or put a project like that together, there's a lot more going on when you have that mix of uses in a building. And obviously, the the vision plan anticipates some greater amount of mixed use coming into the area.
Is that true, Brian?
Yes, I'm sorry. Could you repeat that, Matt? For the question?
We're going through minutes right now, but. The group was sort of just discussing like where the development community is in Williston compared to other places in the country. In terms of how complicated the sites and buildings and developments are that they're willing to build and it tends to feel like. When the town is looking for especially mixed use buildings, that those are harder to put together, both both physically and financially and tenant wise. Than just building an apartment building or just building a one or two tenant retail building.
Absolutely. So this is kind of a first for us as well. We're used to doing either all residential buildings or or just like strictly commercial buildings. So. The mixed use, you know, has been some has, you know, created some challenges. But we're finding tenants are pretty open to the idea and in our liking the idea of having housing, you know, so close by where you can literally just, you know, walk downstairs. But it's the challenge for the commercial spaces to design with their housing above it because like a restaurant, for example. You know, needs things like a chase way, which needs to now go up through three stories and. You know, it adds cost for sure, but. You know, we think it's gonna, we're hoping it works out. We're on our first mixed use building at Cottonwood, so.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying all that.
Yeah.
And and yes, Matt, this is out. It is much harder to finance those type of buildings because there's so much of an unknown. The banks are a little bit lary on it.
So we're gonna speed things up a little bit here because we're at 7:20. We're still in the minute. But they were very detailed, so.
Because that was a question of seem that be words to works.
So do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended? Kate, move second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Wrong, we'll second, yeah.
All in favor of approving the minutes as amended? Any? What's the opposite? Any opposed to or abstentions? Okay, thank you very much. Alright, so notices from other jurisdictions. It's like there were none.
Correct.
Good because last meeting. It's very deep, a lot of detail on that. Okay, so now our is Crystal Lee joining us?
Crystal Lee unfortunately will not be able to join us tonight. She reached out this morning to have family emergency, so we'll love to reschedule her appearance, but. I can talk, just at least explain the materials that I shared and sort of why and answer any questions folks have about those.
Okay.
I found them very educational.
Cheepen?
I found the materials that were included in the packet very education.
Other comments? Questions? Wow, okay. This is one of those things that sometimes we need a little bit of a presentation or a.
Yeah.
preamble to to really spark some questions. But. Yeah, I'm really looking forward to this conversation. And obviously, we also have Grace working on some of the more sort of academic side of. Of these questions because it obviously it's an issue that has been studied as well. And so we hope to, you know, have an ongoing, really ongoing conversation about the ways that. Racial equity and other forms of social justice could be incorporated into. Land use planning and the other activities that we engage in, so. Does anybody else have any comments or thoughts?
I just.
Cheepen?
So I have a lot to learn. I I was very aware and we had good talk in our breakout group about things that are not. And we talk in this group a lot about, say, for the cannabis dispensary. If it's not where public transportation is, who is that then making it unequally available to? And so in terms of public transportation and affordable housing, I feel like we have a good awareness of how those can affect equity. But what other things are there that I'm not yet aware of that would be useful to know?
I think one area that definitely came to mind for me is the. Well, definitely the the health. Filtered that we have applied to the. To town plan and thinking through some of the. Health disparities and how. Land use planning can help to mitigate some of those. And then obviously, the the energy plant actually has a lot of relevance for for equity issues. In part because climate change is already, as we've seen, has. Uneven repercussions for different populations, but also because it's something that all of us should be engaged in. Yeah, so did you want to say anything else, Matt?
I can, I can say just a few quick things on this. The first thing is that while there's always been. At least for the last, you know, 30 plus years, an equity component to planning as as stated by the American Planning Association and. Embedded in its code of ethics. The recent issues related especially to equity in urban policing, the murder of George Floyd. Really brought these issues back to the fore again in the planning world. And a couple of outcomes of that, one of the documents I shared with the group was the 2020 ECO's annual report from Chittenden County. And as they say right on the front of it, it looks very different from any report they've ever done, and they really zeroed in on the. Equity impacts of some of the policies and investments in infrastructure that have been made. In Chittenden County and essentially identify some some areas for really significant. Sure. So.
And I I like to indicate whether the trend is in the desired direction or not.
Yeah, and CCRPC has been really, really great about. Having these indicators and providing frequent updates related to progress on them as new data becomes available. And you see the divides across race and ethnicity that that CCRPC has identified, including homeownership, household income, education, and criminal justice. And, you know, to some extent or another, planning touches all of those, but especially things related. To homeownership and what is done for folks that have. Lower incomes. So, you know, the disparity in income between black and African American households and white households is quite great. Access to higher education, access to homeownership, and I think they note up top, I skipped right over it. Eighty-three percent of the population growth in Chittenden County over the last 10 years has been Hispanic, black, or African American, Indian, or American Indian or Alaska native. So these are the folks who are coming to the region and then they are experiencing a Chittenden County that most of us probably have not. Very, a very different kind of place. And so things that happen in planning and in Williston planning, particularly related to those levers that can be pulled related to the. Abundance and affordability of housing are certainly related to equity. The provision of public facilities and public infrastructure is highly related to equity. We have spent a lot of time talking about planning for. A Taft Corners that contains significant public green space. Which today it contains none of, and that's that's very different. You can go hang out on the Maple Tree Place Green. Until Maple Tree Place decides they don't want you there. And then they can tell you to leave because it's it's not a public place. So that's that's something that's different. They go on to health impacts. Looking at COVID. Frontline job representation, jobs with lower benefits, jobs that require closer physical contact public. Job loss in service sector and then disproportionate impact as well on women. And through mental health impacts related to the availability of transportation, certainly something we talk about. And we go right into talking about the housing picture, which is really where in Williston, we spend an awful lot of our time. Usually from the growth management side or from the side of adopting rules that tend to make development more expensive and time consuming. Because that's what regulation often does. And so, you know, there are there are impacts to that that are positive in terms of the town achieving some of its goals. There are also impacts to that that can be negative and maybe. Disparate to BIPOC community. So I wanted to share this one because it's a really quick summary of a whole bunch of things through an equity lens that's related to this very county. I. I also shared, I'll just tab through these really quickly, this seven days article about racist housing covenants next door in South Burlington. I share this only to say that it exists and it exists here and it did exist here and. You know, limitation of access to homeownership and you can imagine, you know, I'm I'm a homeowner. So were my parents and so were my grandparents and great grandparents, but you could have someone in this community. Whose parents or grandparents were not able to ever be a homeowner or access the advantages of investing in the home they lived in due to covenants like this. And lastly, this Planner's Advisory Service memo, which really just talks about kind of up to the minute discussion of. How do you bring equity into the planning world? And this is a lot of what Grace is working on in terms of the academic research. So this is just barely touching the edge and using one or two examples of. A whole world that's out there amongst planners. And recently, one of the documents I shared with Grace, for example, came from Bangor, Maine, who have drafted an equity lens for their planning program. And so this is, this is happening locally as well. And I'll leave you with one last comment and you guys can sort of discuss or ask questions as you as you wish, but. Megan started the meeting by congratulating Emily and Melinda on the staff for achieving their AICP certification. They have an Institute of Certified Planners. It's also a certification I have. And there's an update to both the continuing education requirements for that certification. And the code that we have to follow in order to keep that certification, both things related to furthering equity goals in the communities. And for the clients that we serve, so. You know, you you really do, you know, when you do this kind of training, we have to do ethics training as part of our continuing that as well and, you know, you'll have that case where it says. What if your community asks you to do something that's counter to these values? And the correct answer on the AICP exam is quit your job. The the better answer is try to convince your community to do things that are aligned with equity goals of the profession, but. You know, I I take that stuff seriously. We had a staff meeting a couple of years ago where I printed out the ethics rules and laminated them and handed them out and said. This is so you can't throw it away. I have a hard time throwing things away if they've been laminated, so. But we do, you know, we do take that seriously. We do expect two things that are almost entirely absent from the 2017 town plan. Climate change resilience and equity to be present throughout the 2025 town plan. And so you can think about this stuff while we're talking about. Taft Corners or other policy things the commission's working on, but certainly think about how it might flow through the next town plan as well.
Thank you, Matt, and thank you, Megan. I couldn't remember what ECOS or ECO stood for, and I was surprised how deep I had to drill to find that the acronym was just accepted by the CCRPC and. So many of their own publications that they don't describe it, and now I forget what it was that it's.
Environment, Community. Bump us out, Taylor.
Opportunity, Society or something?
Yes, like that.
So it was just, I was disappointed that it wasn't explained anywhere, even when there is an ECOS. Heading, I expect to be at the bottom of the page to explain it and it's nowhere. And this is not about us. This was their own, the CCRPC's documents. But one of the documents I came across in doing that, which I thought was one of the ones you linked to, had. For Chittenden County, all these different line item points of things we should do with whether it's going in the right direction or not, and I felt that was really valuable. Environment.
Opportunity.
It's in the chat. Thank you, Taylor.
You're welcome. I, you know, that's, yeah. Sorry, ECOS was developed long before I I came to CCRPC, so I'm not quite sure why it's not spelled out on all our. All our documents, but I I hear you, Chip, and I'll share that.
It's Environment, Community, Opportunity, and Sustainability.
Were you finding that?
I was gonna try to bring up the dashboard.
Yeah, was it, maybe that's where it was. I I just found that remarkably good work. For informing people like us. What the trends are.
While Matt looks for that, I'll just put in one additional plug for. Why we should engage with these things. I really believe strongly that if we continue the status quo and don't do some. Significant. Outreach. Reflection. And and really. Significant consideration of how to make things better. We will just be reproducing the existing system, which is not fair and and so. I am very excited by seeing this in, you know, on our agenda and and I. Definitely am interested in seeing how. The processes of the planning commission can be put to use in this regard, so. He's gone to Google.
Keep talking, Megan.
Matt, are you looking for the scorecard or are you looking for the annual report?
I'm looking for the the live dashboard stuff. Is that the scorecard?
Scorecard, yeah. There's way too much data on it, but yeah, it's it's pretty cool. I just put it in the chat.
Oh, thanks, Taylor. I'll swipe it up and and throw it up on the screen here.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean to take us more time.
We had a little time allocated for this.
Yeah, and while this is coming up.
Yes, Matt.
I will say that, you know. Crystal Lee and I had a really nice conversation, probably.
There.
I don't know, almost a month or six weeks ago. You know, I'd sort of become aware through the town that there's a racial equity alliance in Williston. The group had been working with the select board on the matter of flying the Black Lives Matter flag. But there's, there's so much. Sort of reach that that equity initiative and racial justice alliance can have throughout. Many things that the town does. And so, you know, I reached out to Crystal Lee. I said, I'm a planner. Here's some of the stuff we're working on. We had a lot of concerns starting with Taft Corners process about how to be inclusive. We did some things. We know we could do more. So I'm interested in equity issues also from the perspective of making sure that. We do what's necessary to get voices into the room that are not traditionally represented in the planning process. Either because meetings are difficult to get to or happen at a time when people are working. Or people who just don't feel like they're the kind of person who want to go to a planning commission meeting. And so how to be welcoming and inclusive in that way.
Could you shrink the content, Matt, so that we could see the arrows on the right that are being for us in the room there?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Would it, do you want me to share that same screen via Zoom and then you just project them?
All I have to do is.
Yes, because those colored arrows. I interpreted there, I didn't see a key, but I interpreted the red downward arrow to mean it's going in the wrong direction for what to reaching the goals of ECOS.
Right, and so you can, you can take these out to see, you know, how much down and and margin of error and things like that. And you can also. Actually. I can't remember, Taylor, if you remember how to actually bring up. The the language. I think you can bring up the language from the plan.
Yeah, I would actually go on the the. Hit the plus on the on the left side of. That'll open up, you know, a graph of the actual data. Scroll on the graph, it'll show you the value of the margin of error. It is source is set on top. Obviously, the percentage by year. Table in the right hand column. You go to more. My understanding was that, actually, if you click right on.
I can try the more.
Try the more.
Oh, you know, that that did.
You. You click on the actual language itself, too.
Oh, right.
That'll, that'll actually bring up the language from the ECOS plan, too.
So you can bring, you can bring that up. This is, this is.
Yeah, go to another category.
Right.
One that's not just numbers.
Yeah, I think we have some that are that are a little more rich in terms of their. Like.
Don't get too used to software. I think we're. I think we're totally revamping things in like a year.
It's like the stated goal of the plan language.
Yes.
And. This, this one just says. Eight percent.
Yeah.
And for that data point, yeah, probably didn't have any updated data since 2016.
Right.
I just found this to be a. I just found this to be amazingly well packaged. I didn't go to this level, but just at this level.
Yeah. But, yeah, you can go through with, you know, hazards, flood zones, civic engagement. So, you know, talk about our, our sort of equity, percentage of eligible voters, students who feel valued by the community.
Though ideally what we're gonna do next go around, so 2023 ECOS plan is that we're gonna have something comparable to this scorecard, but probably with less individual indicators. And that, you know, the likely be through, not through the Clear Impact server or software, it'll probably be through his reproduct in our JS product. And the likely be some sort of geographic component as well, some sort of mapping component. Show some data points regionally, likely by census tract or by municipality.
Yeah. So there's, for anybody who's watching this, there's, there's just tons of things that you can bring up this way and learn about the, the trends and the accuracy of the information the county has to work with. And sort of ask yourself like, where's, where's Williston in this? So. Good stuff.
All right. So more to come on this, right? And I, I would be very happy for us to have a, you know, to have these issues be present in really all of our conversations. You know, maybe not with every single bit of minutia and, you know, every bylaw, but to have it as a, well, maybe Bangor Maine did a formal filter. In the meantime, we could certainly do an informal filter between us to be conscious of these things. So shall we move on or any other comments or questions? Okay, great. Also, I, I apologize. I meant to thank Ron for alerting me to Melinda and Emily's certification. So thank you, Ron. Don't know what it means that you're trolling the AI CP website, but. Okay. So next on the agenda is NECS specific plan. And my sense was that that is being tabled for right now.
Yeah, just want to remind the Commission that we had thought that we might have a transmittal from the Committee by today. They held probably their second to last meeting today, covered a lot of ground, a lot of zeroing in on details about potential public benefit as well as mitigation of impact should the industrial zone be expanded closer to the residential zone in the project area. So we, we put it on today because we have this as the, as the date in the charge. They're pretty close on schedule.
And is, is it Ron now that's on that? Is it sort of that? Do you want to ask Ron if he wants to do this in an updated?
Do you have anything to add, Ron?
No, I think it's moving along. The, the neighbors were, it was a good exchange. They're still, I, I don't think anybody really is excited about having a large industrial business expand into their residential neighborhood. And then one person brought up that there was some conflict with the Gateway and what was available in the Gateway. I think Matt mentioned, or Emily mentioned, the Gateway has been in existence 10 years and only one permit has been signed, but it's not complete. Am I telling that correct, Matt?
It's been about six years since 2015, since the Gateway West district.
Baited out of residential and industrial land. And yeah, there's been one, one project's received its DRB approval to convert a residential property into a commercial one. But at the time Gateway was created, the list of allowed commercial uses was quite narrow and excluded most retail uses or uses that would generate high amounts of traffic. I think under the theory of trying to maintain compatibility with residential. But some of the folks who live in that area, particularly in properties fronting on Williston Road, were sort of representing. I can't do much with my property and now I'm confronted with this proposal to expand an industrial use even closer to me and I'm still stuck with this Gateway zoning. And the counterpoint was, well, you could engage in a specific plan like New England chimney supply is, is that realistic? At some point beyond this NECS process, does the Commission want to think about adjustments to that Gateway area? I mean, it's a, it's a tough spot just the way it looks and works on the map. And it's always going to be tough to find the right sort of level there, the correct balance. But staff certainly feels like it's an area that would warrant further attention as we, as we think, especially the plan.
One other thing that I thought was promising was PA had responded to the 2:00 AM truck delivery and noise wake up and guests had gotten things straightened out that that wouldn't be happening again. So the resident seemed to be developing a little more trust going forward.
Stay tuned.
Thank you, Ron, and thank you for your work on that Committee too. Appreciate it. Okay, so next we have form-based code discussion.
Could I issue a point of order? To try to understand part elementary procedure here in the Commission?
Go for it.
What I was interested in in Robert's rules, I've always been taught, you always started with old business and the old business is what we're about to talk about. And I think it should have been at the first part of our agenda so that we can complete it. And as we start putting new business in front of old business, then the old business, I think, gets a shorter rift at going through. And I just point that out. I'm not, there seems to be a different way that's been done here. And I, I haven't seen a published, this is the process of how the Commissions create their agendas.
Okay, thank you. That, that's a good point. I, I don't know that I have ever seen those, any speculums about how the Williston Planning Commission designs agendas. We tend to just inherit them from the staff. So I'm gonna bounce that over to Matt and he can defend his agenda.
That made me put you on the spot.
No, it's a, it's a fair point, Ron, and I'm, and I'm familiar with a lot of Committees that do operate under old business versus new business. The development of agendas for the Planning Commission has traditionally fallen to the staff and been dealt with somewhat informally based on, you know, what we, what we think the time constraints are or if we have a guest speaker like I thought we were gonna have tonight. We tend to try to put that upfront to, to cause them to have a little bit earlier of an evening. But, you know, one, one thing we sort of started when Chapin was Chair was Chapin and I would often have a phone call about the agenda. We never really edited the order of anything, but we kind of talk about the items and Megan, I'm certainly open to that. As a, as a prelude to distributing it to all of you. So it's, you know, a role that the Chair can certainly take on.
And, and we moved review of minutes from the end to the beginning, which is in line with what you're saying, Ron, which is it's old business. And so we wrap it up and while it's still in our minds.
Well, I get all prepared to talk about TAF corners and then, oh, wait a minute, we've got all this other stuff to talk about first. And I, being an old boomer, I start getting confused by the end of the week.
A boomer.
Okay, boomer. Thank you for, for bringing that to our attention, Ron, and we will, we will work on that and take your to heart. Okay, so the, the verb in number seven is discuss. We have some updated materials for the vision plan, the executive summary and the transmittal memo. And Matt, did you want to provide an overview and then we can dive in?
Ah, sure. Megan, do you, do you want to let, I don't know if Brian knows this or if Brian and Al may want to know where they can go on the website to pull up the document or do you know that already?
Uh, yeah, we, we downloaded the document yesterday, the vision plan and haven't had a chance to go through everything, but you know, know a little bit about it. So we wanted to kind of listen in tonight and see where, what direction it was headed and what the next step was in the process.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Chapin. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, first, I, I was on vacation last week, it's even before that. So a huge thank you to my staff, Melinda and Emily, for juggling all of the documents, working with Taylor and the consultant team to get everything up to the minute distributed to the group and placed in a way that you could edit and comment. So where we are is we're a week away from having an introductory discussion of the vision with the Williston Select Board. So that's July 27th. That's at a Select Board meeting in person or on Zoom for however folks want to attend. And it's going to be from 8:00 to 9:00 PM. And as soon as I see the Select Board packet on Friday, I'll pass that along with the Planning Commission to confirm that time. But we should have about an hour. And so a couple of things that have led up to the discussion tonight. We've had continuous revisions to the vision plan. Staff and CCRPC have been communicating discussions and comments as they've occurred here. The Planning Commission back to the consultant team and kind of, kind of negotiating those into the vision plan. So the, the version that the Select Board has, the version that the Planning Commission has, does have some, some changes in it. We've received through this agenda a summary of those changes as well as an executive summary document prepared by Taylor at the CCRPC that sort of summarizes the production of the vision plan, its elements, and in particular identifies the implementation strategies of the plan. You know, planning was a lot easier when we figured we'd just get a comp plan adopted and then, and then go change our bylaws to fit it and that was it. The vision plan, because again, of the growing complexity of a place like TAF corners and the need to provide public facilities and spaces and deal with complicated infrastructure really calls on the town to engage a whole lot of different strategies beyond just how we regulate the use of land. Even though we're going to get to that, that's the next step after the vision plan is to begin the coding of the rulebook for how buildings and sites will be allowed to look, feel, function and be placed under the new form-based code. So that's the executive summary. Beginning with the meeting two weeks ago, the Planning Commission had the Select Board version of the vision plan in front of them as well as what I, for lack of a better term, calling a transmittal memo. Really trying to identify the areas of friction that remain within and amongst the Planning Commission. So either between the Planning Commission as a group and the vision plan as a document or just for, you know, some members who have particular issues with particular things. And, you know, the way we tried to structure those friction areas was to say, you know, what are the, what are the realities about this issue? You know, if, if I'm worried about additional growth and development in Williston, one of the realities is that there will be development pressure and some kind of growth in Williston regardless of where this plan lands, that the pressure is coming. So what are the realities? What are the things in the vision plan that are really going to get refined in the coding process? In other words, there's, there's a picture of a building with a red roof. I don't like red roofs. That's okay. Adopting a vision plan with red roofed buildings doesn't mean that you've committed to allowing all buildings in TAF corners to have red roofs, et cetera. And then, you know, what are, what are the things that are gonna change over time? This is a vision plan that, that purports to go out to 2070. There's a lot we don't know about what's gonna happen between now and 2070 in Williston. So I used the example and I saw some comments as folks edited about the use of curb space on public streets for street parking. And how, you know, one of the, one of the things that goes on in the sustainable transportation world is there's, there's changing demand for curb space in urban places. Places for food delivery drivers to drop off. Places for people to charge an electric vehicle at a public charger, take a car space, turn it into a bunch of bike racks. Amazon delivery vehicle, ride share vehicle, some kind of vehicle that's not even been invented yet, flying car, who knows? But that curb space is really at a premium. And so all those street sections we've drawn that show parallel parking along the street, we probably know that between now and 2070, the demand for the use of that physical space on the street will evolve. Which means those street sections will likely need to evolve over the life of this plan. But what the vision does show is a street that has narrower vehicle lanes than have been typically built. Elements that slow traffic, separated bike lanes or indicated bike lane space on street. Places for trees, places for dooryards, et cetera. So it's trying to kind of contextualize, you've got such a detailed plan, 80, 80 something pages. Here's what it's all gonna be like and it can feel really set in stone. There are realities behind that plan that are basically set in stone, but there's a lot of flexibility. And so can the Planning Commission arrive at an informed consensus about the vision plan? It says, we know what this is, we know what it isn't, we know what it is committing us to and what it's not committing us to. And let's get on with the rulemaking so that we can have better development standards in place as future development starts to come to the table in Williston. And I will tell you, as someone who staffs the development review process in Williston, that nobody out in TAF corners is hitting the pause button right now, waiting for us to adopt new rules. You know, we are, we are taking in proposals for development in TAF corners frequently. You might have seen there's dirt moving at Finn Crossing again, a result of a recent development review approval for a retail store. There are other sites that are, there's interested in or under discussion. And I'm not saying that we need to be in a hurry on the coding side of this project. But if you wait long enough, one of those greens you've drawn, they may get a DRB approval for a building instead. Because that's where we are today. So I've described to people for about the last 10 years, what's new development in Williston gonna be like? If you don't change the rules, new development in Williston will look a lot like Finn Crossing, a lot like CBS or a lot like Watford where Panera Bread and the Price Wireless Store are, because those are all projects that are 100% compliant with the development rules as they sit today. I also, you know, I used a picture when I talked at the Select Board about considering supporting this project of Maple Tree Place, just like it is today, but with all of the brick on Maple Tree Place painted white. That was an approval that the DRB granted to the owners of Maple Tree Place at the time. Because the DRB found nothing in the development standards that said you can't paint a brick building white. There was a strong negative reaction to what that looked like, even among the members who voted in favor of it. But we porched through the bylaw and said, you know what, this isn't something we regulate right now. And that white paint, at least under legend, is still sitting in a storage room at Maple Tree Place. The approval has expired. I marked it on my calendar when that was gonna happen. I quietly celebrated it when it passed. You know, but there, there are implications to sticking with what we have today for, you know, another significant length of time. And I'll pick on cottonwood since, since Brian and Al are here, but in a good way. There's a lot of really good things about cottonwood that are not outright required by our bylaws. There are some other things about cottonwood people might disagree on. There are some other things about cottonwood people might disagree on, but I can just tell you that those buildings don't have to be quite as nice as they are under our purpose. Yeah, you didn't hear that part, Brian. So, you know, there's, there's some, there's some reason that, uh, the select board chose to support the town engaging in this project. The planning commission chose to dedicate a lot of their work plan to it. We're in this step of dealing with the vision, but we really have a big important chunk of the project ahead of us. And, and when we, when we get going on that, we'd like to make sure we have enough time to do it well.
Before we dive in, can I ask what you are hoping our endpoint for this evening is?
Excuse me, fire smoke has been getting me. I feel so wrong to cough.
No.
So I saw some comments on the transmittal memo.
Okay.
I think that would be a great place to try to get some consensus on. I didn't see comments on the overall vision.
Chiehan.
I just want to say I haven't gotten through my homework, and I have not put comments on these two things, but I have finally done a good reading of the plan and know what I want to comment, but I'm behind. I apologize. I really liked the executive summary.
Okay, good. Um, great. Did you, I'm sorry.
No, yeah.
Yeah, Ron, go ahead.
I wanted to, uh, just kind of jump in of having finally gotten through and read the whole thing, and every page I've marked. But the showstopper I ran into is on page forty-eight, and it looks like we're, that somewhere in this meeting process, we decided that Act Two Fifty was the reason why things had failed here. And I, at least that's the way I'm reading it, because I'm not ready to. I think Act Two Fifty may need to be amended, uh, but I haven't seen where it's caused any problems. And then once I dug into it, it looked like it was in a group of, uh, property owners. And one of the problems I've had with the whole process we've gone through is we had five breakouts, but I really don't really, I really don't know what happened in mine, because I don't have good meeting notes on that. And I don't have good meeting notes on everybody else's meetings so that I can get my head around it as I start going through, uh, the various phasing and the draft that, that's been presented to us. So those are the things, this Act Two Fifty is one I need to have be educated by the commission or by Matt of, of what are we saying here? And how did this get into the vision without multiple parties speaking to it? And then the one, one other thing is when we start talking about streets, I sent Melinda some pictures of the hamlet, and we have one of those proposed narrow street was built here thirteen years ago. And so there's, uh, Melinda has some, uh, photos I've sent of what it looks like in winter, uh, when people are trying to plow, get on the bus, and empty the trash, how deep the snow gets here. We just negotiated this past year a, a snow map of where that snow's going to be. But that's also that where we're marked to be able to put snow is also marked on the official map as a possible road, uh, in the grid road system to extend Seaborne. So I, I have questions about how we got here and how much staff was involved. Like, uh, Public Works especially is where I, I wanted to see what they said, because I know what I've been told here for the last four years, but I'd like to have seen them in a public meeting explain, uh, and what they saw as a viable, a viable draft vision for us to look at. Because what I've heard is, since I've moved here, is, well, you just need to hire somebody to haul the snow off. And that kind of ends the conversation with me at that point. So I'll, I'll, I just wanted to get my two cents in.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to respond to the Act Two Fifty question?
Sure. You know, a couple of, a couple of things. It's probably not surprising that if you were to talk to property owners who are interested in developing their property in the growth center, that they, that they like to not be subject to Act Two Fifty. It costs money and it takes time. But I will add a staff perspective to that, because there are some things about Act Two Fifty jurisdiction that, that do run at cross purposes to some of the goals of the town plan. The biggest one being the creation of, of housing opportunity. So in Act Two Fifty, there is, for example, an exemption from Act Two Fifty for what are called priority housing projects. These are projects that create certain numbers of dwelling units within a designated growth center, village center, neighborhood development area, or downtown. The catch is if you're adding those units to a site that already has an Act Two Fifty permit, you still have to go in and amend that permit. And a recent example of that resulted in about a three-month review process, eighteen thousand dollars in fees, and zero material change to the project. So in other words, the, the project as it was developed to Williston standards was just fine under Act Two Fifty. But there was added time and cost. And cumulatively, that really creates challenges. There are also some existing Act Two Fifty limitations on building design buffering and height that could hamper the redevelopment of some of our sites, especially the big box stores in town. And let's not forget that municipalities are also subject to Act Two Fifty. So when we have something like a vision for a public park, or green, or Trader Lane being reconfigured to incorporate green, Trader Lane will need to be re-permitted before the town can build it. Those things also add a regulatory burden to the things that the town might build. Um, the other part I'll mention is that the removal of Act Two Fifty jurisdiction does not remove the jurisdiction of all of the various departments of the state that regulate elements of development. So, um, there are, there is still jurisdiction by the Agency of Natural Resources, by, um, other folks, um, who normally would comment through the Act Two Fifty process. So it's not a complete abandonment of what the state wants. It's, it's, uh, an adjustment. I'll, I'll also just say that, uh, this idea of, of actively trying to get, uh, growth centers or Williston's growth center out of Act Two Fifty, this has not been discussed, uh, in front of the select board yet. It's a, it's a novel and fairly radical idea, I think, for them or almost anybody to, to be thinking about. This is a discussion that's happening at the state level as well. Should designated areas that are targeted for growth still be subject to Act Two Fifty? Given how much of Act Two Fifty is about limiting, uh, the impacts of sprawl. So if you're building in the area that's been planned for growth, you're, you're not sprawling. You're, you're, you're not creating strip development. At least you shouldn't be if those designations have been approved under a rigorous enough review. And I think that final point has been the sticking point, uh, at the legislature about whether there should be exemptions for growth centers and other designated centers, is was the review process that awarded that designation rigorous enough in terms of, and has the recertification of the designation been rigorous enough that it's worth granting regulatory relief? And I, I mean, I can tell you from Taft Corners, I've read the history of the battle over designating, uh, Taft Corners as a growth center in two thousand and six. And I've been around for two of the five-year reviews since then by the downtown board. Uh, I believe that, that we've had to be, um, pretty good at showing that we've met the town's commitments when it comes to having a growth center, primarily more than half of new development and growth in town. Town overall has to take place in the growth center, our policies have to create that. So, long story short, it's a, it's a big idea, it's a long road ahead. The idea here is to identify that, um, it is something the town could engage with if it wanted to. It would make a difference in terms of the attractiveness of the growth center for development and redevelopment. It would reduce the cost and time burden on certain types of development in town. And if there was a head nod from the select board on this sort of thing, town staff could engage in a little more activity around, um, you know, researching and looking at, um, what it would take to change those laws.
Thank you. Any questions?
One thing I want to, back to Matt, uh, you, I caused you to choke up there, I think. I liked what all you had done. So the last meeting, when we got together, I liked how you had summarized it, and you got it into a form that I could begin to get my arms around. And each, each iteration of how we do this, I, I believe is getting better. And I appreciate you and the staff and how you, as I'm looking at what your roles are in this ballet that we have here in Williston. That was why I was researching, what is it an urban planner is supposed to do? So that's how I got there, so I could know my enemy, you know? And then I started thinking, well, I should be applying. I meet all those, accept the ability to speak clearly. So I just wanted you to know, thank you.
Um, so looking at the, uh, live version of memo, um, it looks like Ron and Kate have some, uh, some great comments and questions. Chiehan, and I have not had a chance to do this yet. Alex, did you have any, uh, did you have a chance to look at this? Or have any comment?
Similarly, I did not have a good chance to go through the live version of the memo. I got a little busy with work. That said, I, I had a lot of time to reflect on the memo and read through it. And I kind of agree with the statements that were made last time that were sort of clarifying to me, and Matt sort of repeated them now, which is, you know, the vision plan isn't meant to be perfect as it gets delivered to the, the town select board, and we should sort of encourage the select board to understand that, like, we're giving them this vision plan as a straw man, and say, we think this is pretty close. Tell us, you know, if you're, if we're nuts, or tell us if, you know, you believe it's close with caveats, and give us those caveats. And then we will take this back with those caveats and start things like the hard work of rulemaking to enforce this, right? So, so I'm actually pretty comfortable with the way this, with the state of this document and delivering it to the select board with that sort of instruction that, like, hey, this is, it's a vision plan, it's not the actual code. And in the code, we'll translate, you know, this vision plan and your comments on it into the final code, which will ultimately shape the development. And I think if we deliver that message, which I think the, the transmittal memo does reasonably well, um, and, and we just say it during the meeting, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable, sort of, you know, that the finer points of editing this vision plan are not quite as important as I might have thought before the last meeting.
Thank you. Kate, did you want to represent some of your comments?
Sure. All right. Sorry, that's not super big, I can try that. Okay.
Consensus.
My glasses on, so. Yeah, I.
Only seventy.
I wanted to look closer, but can you tell me what the password is? Sorry about that, the wifi, should I use?
Oh, I, yeah, it's, um.
Wireless with two dollar signs.
Capital W.
Shirt around, it's really tight.
That's why it's only the gas bar.
Yes, that makes sense. Okay, so, um, the eighty percent, I don't know, I thought eighty percent was high.
Is it more than fifty percent? Oh, shoot, sorry.
I think there's more than fifty percent agreeing with each other, but between agreeing with each, I'm sorry.
Chiehan.
To Kate's point, um, I feel as though we, as a group, may agree with our, each other seventy-five or eighty percent. But there are some things in the vision that the consultants put in that I think we probably don't agree with at all, or only a little. And so depends on what you're talking about.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, just to this point, like, um, I think a lot, it's not totally to do that, but I, I think a lot of the photos kind of concern me a little bit. And, um, I've said it before, but the three to four-story thing concerns me a lot. But I think a lot of the photos are kind of misleading as to what it could be or will likely be. And that's kind of what concerns me, because they show us these pictures and they say, oh, everybody likes these. And it's like, well, yeah, I do too. But that's never going to happen in Williston. It's never going to look like that, because we're not, we're not big enough. We don't have the money, we don't have the population to turn into that. So does that look right? Sure. But that's if I live in Cambridge, Massachusetts, or, or Maryland. So that's kind of, it kind of concerns me that you're saying, oh, yeah, look, everybody, look at these great photos, look at these great community places, and these places have, you know, four times the population on what, of what Williston has, and what we will foresee if we have, even in twenty-seven. And a lot of it, again, is retail-based.
So what, do we have our population projections to end here?
Um, we vetted.
Not that they're great.
They're not. And, and I made some huge assumptions to go out to, like, twenty-eighty and, and considered the idea of, of making a debt in the vacancy rate for the region and some other things. But that was more an order of magnitude question. Does this build-out look like four thousand dwelling units, not forty thousand? The answer was like, yeah. At about a thousand square feet unit on those footprints in the three to four-story range, or, you know, some one, some two, some three, some four, you're in that four thousand or some five thousand dwelling unit range at full, complete build-out. So that said, yeah, it's, it's never, in this plan, going to be fifty thousand people like Arlington, or certainly never going to be any bigger than that. And so that concern about, well, what is the critical mass to make things go in terms of good-looking streetscapes or, um, you know, greenery restaurant, you know, vibrant retail landscape? Megan raised this question at the last meeting, that, you know, the right avenue rendering is heavy on retail. Do we really have the market for that? So a couple of things I'll put out there around that. One is, um, you know, the idea of a form-based code is we're getting away from use, and we're looking at form, we're, we're looking at the building itself. So in sort of feeding that commentary back to the consultant, saying, well, yeah, we drew it that way, but it doesn't have to be all retail on the ground floor on right avenue, it could be anything. The idea is to, you know, that the building has the entrance facing the street. So there's a lot of flexibility in there. The, the nice pictures are, yes, they're from bigger places with a much more vibrant retail or tourist economy with a lot of foot traffic. Hard to believe we would jump all the way to that, uh, over the lifespan of the plan. But the dimensional aspects of what's happening in those pictures in terms of, you know, mountain street, amount of parking, amount of sidewalk, tree space, et cetera, can be, uh, required. They're actually not huge adjustments from what the town requires today. And, and big, big picture of the coding exercise, and where, where I see this from my experience of staffing and development reviewing the list is, I just want to be able to say, don't put the backside of your building on the main street, which, which I'm not able to currently say. And meaning I'm not able to require that under the, the development rules. And therefore, streets that do have an opportunity for walkability and vibrancy are somewhat less so than they might have been able to. If that's the stated goal of the town plan, you know, walkable, pedestrian friendly, strong pedestrian orientation. So. So. I think that's it's important to be realistic about what's the capability of the place. We also did have a consultant go back to the market consultant and ask that question about, you know, you're showing these pictures of retail. Well, the market consultant said. Not so much big retail. If you really got all this residential, you do start to support. Some of that sort of corner store, small, small retail. You know, residential building with a retail component on the corner kind of stuff. So there could be some ground for retail that happens on some of these streets. Even though overall, we think the retail market is really changing, certainly in the big box. Yeah, I tried to make this point throughout. Like I said about curb space and parking. It's just, it's going to evolve. There could be Amazon robots driving down the sidewalk twenty years from now. That you go down to your stoop and, you know, unlock with your phone and and get your whatever. Or drones dropping things from the sky. We just don't know.
I think Gagano's does that already with pizza.
Yeah, yeah, it's. You know, and there are places doing these delivery robots that look like a hidden cooler on wheels. You know. Sidewalk in San Francisco, so. Being open and flexible, but that like general human principles, like walking by a building that has its door near. Where you can see it feels nicer than walking by a building that's just a big. Empty wall. You know, can you can you get there? So I I think again, speaking of like what Alex said, this is it's such a clear vision here, but it's really very fuzzy. But there's a lot. To be very real with the select board about. And I go back to that issue of buying all those green spaces that we like to see. Let alone maintaining them, let alone. Plowing all those streets as Ron was talking about. I do want the decision makers to go in eyes wide open that this is, this is a vision that involves a much more complex way of being in the municipality. With a lot more staff and a lot more stuff, but you know. I'll tell you the 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 big fish version of this isn't so great either. You know, you think about Maple Tree Place. All developed at once, self-contained, self-maintaining. Generates local auction sales tax revenue, generates property tax revenue. It's about twenty years old. And this year they come to the town and they say, guess what? We think we're worth about thirty million fewer dollars than you think we're worth. Please reduce our property tax bill. And.
So that really happened?
Yes. Yeah, they had a hearing before a board civil authority where they said, we think we're not worth. Ninety million. We think we're worth sixty million. And I live in South Burlington. The university mall does a version of this about every three years. And they're not entirely wrong. Now, if you imagine that Maple Tree Place instead was a neighborhood. With, you know, a hundred different owners of various pieces of it. All moving and shifting and adapting to the economy as it changes. Probably not everybody subject to a ten year lease on everything or 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 willing to hold a space open for five years to get a new ten year lease. Well, you might have a few people in there who have those hearings with the BCA from time to time, the board of civil authority and say, I I I don't think I'm quite worth what you think I'm worth. But there's a lot less of that. Because you've got all of that. Adaptability built into the ownership pattern. So doing things that encourage small, that encourage buy building. You know, I mean. How long do you leave a big box empty before you go to the ECA and say, my site is worth zero dollars? And and you're probably right. It's helpful, you know, that your site is is a liability. So. A plan that brings that diversity of ownership to the place would be very good.
Until you re until you repurpose it as a as a experience site, not a retail site.
Possibly, yeah. You know, so my point, my point being. Can you plan for a land use pattern that generates the value that you need? In order to. Get this stuff because you can take the nicest and urbanest development in the world, and if it's too heavily invested in one kind of of thing. Or or just an owner who just decides to be absentee. The nice landscaping will dry up and blow away, just like the junky cheap landscaping, you know, I mean, you know. It just won't matter. So you need to build resilience into that development pattern. And I I do want the select board to understand all of that kind of thing. That there should be a goal embedded in this of. Creating a strong place that can pay for itself, you know, that can support itself.
But what you're saying then also suggests that. That some of these residential units. That there should be a diversity of ownership of some of the residential units too. So not necessarily. A big block of apartments owned by one entity. But individually owned communities, maybe some rentals. Is that, would that be part of that vision?
Yeah, I mean.
Because I don't see any discussion of that.
Well, right. So the the focus of the plan is so heavily on form. And the idea, I think, to to look at diversity of ownership, you would look for diversity of form as much as anything. So, you know, if you look at food crossing, it's about. Close to fifty fifty rental to ownership in terms of the unit count. And the rental buildings look one way, right? Big apartment buildings. And most of the ownership stuff, nobody lives above you. Except for about. Forty units in what we call the C buildings, which are flats. And and if you went to one of those. And somebody said to you, is this a rental or is this an ownership unit? I I wouldn't bet any money, but I would get the answer right. So. I think. A vision that allows for a diversity of building types and forms. You may have places where you're encouraging the breaking up of like those really massive buildings. But you may also have places where that's the scale that's necessary to achieve, you know, another goal.
Megan, can I jump on that point just real quick, just to clarify, you know, I think. I think the the one way that the the planning commission, when we start to code, can control ownership patterns is through. You know, lot size requirements potentially and and breaking up larger lots into smaller pieces. That would result in different or greater number of ownership. Ownership entities across the growth center in in the future. You know, in terms of rental versus homeownership of apartment buildings, just remember that, you know, that's not something that can be coded. You know, the municipality doesn't have jurisdiction over over. Renting versus owning. That's that's fully. The prerogative of the owner of the structure. They can decide to condo or not. That's something that we can't actively code.
Sure. Thank you, Taylor. I I certainly understand that. I I think this gets back to. Kind of related to a comment of Kate's on this memo, but also something that I had complained about last time. Which is the uniformity of the visuals. Of the residential buildings in in the vision. And I think that's, you know. I think that's a hard, hard thing to say, oh, but this is just fuzzy. It isn't necessarily going to be like this. Because we're sort of bombarded with these visuals of exactly the same. This is my comment about the copy and paste, right? Where. You know, we're not seeing that kind of diversity of. Form yet. Well, fair enough. This is a vision plan that that may not be. Sort of, this might not be the right document for that, but but I sort of share. Kate's concern about, you know, these these big blocks and I I'm totally in favor of. Like personally, I'm totally in favor of three or four story buildings and a, but I want to see. Like that diversity that you're talking about because I I don't think. That, I mean, there's, there's a monotony to those kinds of uniformed, uniform. Buildings and, you know, okay, maybe that's not what's really going to be. Implemented in in the form based code. But. I think that's partly what is causing reactions to the vision plan.
Can we, can we provide direction then or or perhaps address this somewhat in the transmittal memo that the the planning commission? When we get to code. Wants to at least discuss. Let's say requirements for building size. Or footprint size. You know. Wants to make sure that there's a diversity of building types and building sizes. Perhaps even based on the street type. Throughout the growth center. Is that, is that accurate? Is that something that we can, we can kind of put in that transmittal memo?
Absolutely. I I think that would be really helpful because I think. Again, the visuals, of course, always visuals are really powerful and and I think that is sort of, and not just Kate, you know, and me. But I think a lot of reaction. Around that has been, you know, has been those those visuals. So having that in words would be really super. I realize the visuals are very. Time consuming and expensive to produce. So that's. That's great on my behalf. Chapin, go ahead.
Process wise, it would help me if we could either go through Ron and Kate's comments on this document. And and try to get through them. Or because I haven't done my homework well enough, take like one page that I have issues with. And go through those issues to get feedback because some of my issues are the kind of thing we talked about last time. Where Taylor may need to just educate me on why it has to be that way. But I'd like to get past that point. And and the people who have put comments and I'd be like to. Is that possible?
Sure.
You can just at least make sure we each understand what the point is.
I wasn't, if I can speak, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, Madam Chairman.
Go ahead, Ron.
I just put comments out there as like a stream of consciousness. So whoever the editor of this document. Would be able to see comments and maybe if they have questions of what does Ron say or, you know. That's appropriate, but I I don't have an urgent need to sit here and go line by line to. Explain the comments unless they're confusing or or it's a point people want to talk about. So the one point I do wanted to make are are through all of this is. The marketing language in the vision statement about pedestrian friendly or whatever. Name we're going to give it. I want it to have some measurable criteria associated with it. So that the next time I buy in into a subdivision, I can hold someone accountable that. You know, by whatever criteria of measurement. For things to happen to make it walkable. By a common definition that we have.
Does page thirty seven, thirty eight, thirty nine do that or four up to forty one? In other words, the cross sections of the streets in.
Well. Ron, I read this comment and, you know, I'm. It's reacting to a quote from the nineteen ninety plan and probably language that existed before then where I think people probably in the room. Knew what they thought they were saying, but yeah, walkability. It it can be measured. You know, you can, you can look at a real estate listing and come up with the walk score. You can, you can look at the. Places that have pursued, I believe bicycle friendly communities now also has a walking friendly communities. Metric where where communities actually have to apply and show. All the ways in which they create and maintain and connect. Walking facilities. So.
ARP has a assessment, like a street assessment process that we can go through. That might be something we would want to explore at some point, Ron.
Okay.
I take your point that that we need really good clarity. With with these these phrases and you're right. That. We tend to, you know, just as with all systems, we tend to just reproduce something if we have some vague understanding of what. But then when we're challenged to just to actually define it or describe it, it it does become more difficult. So. So I appreciate that. And I think we could. We could certainly. Suggest some measures and mechanisms for assessing that. Let's hear from Kate and then.
No, I just want to say, I think there might be a. A difference in between like what is walkable? And what we see like these are good indications or if you walk by. Healthy living, there's a nice wide sidewalk, there's some grass, it's pretty, it's, you feel safe. But I think what Ron might be getting at is more the actual upkeep of that because even if that's like that in the winter, if there's three feet of snow on it. You're not going to be walking in burning woods.
Exactly.
You have sidewalks all over, but and we actually pay somebody to. Plow them, but they're not really fully plowed. So it's not really walkable and people walk in the street, which is okay in burning woods, not so okay. So I think there's two different issues. It's like, is this walkable? But then is what is being up kept and done to keep it walkable throughout the year?
And I think this actually gets back to some of our equity issues too because. You know. There are, there's sort of a basic infrastructure. Set of qualifications that we might say, okay, well, this is, you know, you you could physically walk on this. That, you know, a an able bodied person who isn't, you know, in a rush or, you know. What other other qualifications there might be could physically navigate this space. But if we are serious about equity, we also need to attend to. To our elderly population, which is growing. We need to make sure that places are accessible for disabled populations. For parents pushing strollers or navigating with toddlers who refuse to hold your hand. Or or all those other hundreds of things that, you know, could be a factor of the life course or they could be. You know, something embedded in in your social position. And and then we have to also account for things like seasonality and even time of day. And I think those are, those are maybe a little trickier. In part because they could be experienced on a very personal level. And they aren't necessarily. They don't lend themselves to sort of uniform. Qualities. And but I think it's a really good discussion for us to have. And I hope that the form based code. Process will will in, you know, involve some of those kinds of discussions where we can. Think about how to make spaces not just adequate, but actually welcoming, like make them extra. Extra good. Yeah, Chapin, go ahead.
I'm, can I be after?
Oh, yeah, Melinda, sorry. Go ahead.
I just, this sort of got me thinking about, you know, so I see like a walkability score as as a kind of performance measure and. You know, this is sort of similar, well, sort of similar to like the Ecos scorecard. So, you know, the town is undertaking this big. Project of trying to develop a form based code. And making sure that it meets our goals moving forward. And so. You know, having a discussion about. What the performance measures would be, like how we measure the benefits of this and and figure out a way to kind of. Repeatedly, you know, come back to that and and say, oh, well, we. Created these, you know, for public spaces in the growth center over this amount of time and next number of people. Use those spaces and I don't know, just.
Well, I I really hope that this process has, in academia, we call it like assessment process, right? Where we we're kind of. Held to account. Where we can, we can report out annually or something like that on, you know, our, is this meeting our goals? What would we need to do to? Stretch to meet that? So I would assume that would be embedded in. Process. We'll get it from Chapin and then I'll put you on next, okay, Ron?
Okay.
But to me, Megan, the last thing you said about this is what we have to work out in developing form based code is to me the crucial point. And at this point, this is a vision, a high level statement. And I would say TAF corners has been developed for auto centric use. And you can see that in so many ways. It permeates everything. And I understand what pedestrian oriented means in concept. And so I feel like we can't go, we need to delay what you're talking about, all those things to the form based. And so I feel like we can't go, we need to delay what you're talking about, all those things to the form based code. However, if these layouts don't lend themselves to that, then we have a problem. And that's what I want to talk about is where the layouts aren't lending, where the layouts that are right here is our vision, don't lend themselves to that goal. So at the abstract level, not yet in the form based code level.
Yeah, go ahead, Ron.
I would ask Melinda, if you have the ability to share the photos I sent you of the snowstorms on our street, it's Madison, it's street I live on. And put those, compare those to the roadways that are on what thirty six? The the narrow ones in a in in vision what it's like in the winter time on these drawings in our vision plan. What I hope shows up in the photos is the level of snow. My what started me taking pictures was the town plow passing the school bus, picking up kids. It was the school bus had stopped for the trash can. And it was just this major accident looking for a place to happen. So I started photographing. And I never caught that photo again, but we have a problem with the town plow taking down the trash cans in Casella once I'm in a certain place. And and so there's a lot of coordination that I think could be done as I think about farm based code, but we have to look at how we operationalize it also. This is a private vendor taking out a street lot. It's got a ten degrees slant on it now and the town took it over without giving me the opportunity to tell them they were taking over a broken lot. So we're all going to go in together and pay for this with our tax dollars eventually. So that's kind of why I was taking that picture. This is Finney Crossing and they leave blocks of snow every winter at the end of the sidewalk. And on the other side is a clear sidewalk, but it's got an inch of salt because the vendor they use makes a lot of money throwing salt. So nobody in my neighborhood who has dogs walks on that side of the street that's got the salt all over it. If you walk in snowshoes or in the deep snow, eventually you get to where there's huge mounds of snow that you can't get past. So everything pushes you out into the street. This is a there's a trash can in the snow that's been harvested by the town plan. Gives you an idea of how much snow is out there. I think this was late January snow. Let's just keep going. We don't need to dwell too much. Oh, this is my favorite. I pay two entities. I pay the city to plow the street who puts that there. And I pay another entity forty thousand dollars a year collectively to mow and clear the snow. And the town does this little pileup about three times a day. And just the way it turns out, I'm on the curve that unloads a whole half a block of snow that didn't have a driveway to push it into. But I'm supposed to sit there and we we've had people who've had to call who were having heart issues, they had to come through these kinds of things. Let's keep going. Oh, this is the truck in the middle of the snowstorm that's got, you can't see what's going on, but every Tuesday night, the Shaw truck driver shows up. It's he's, he hasn't been here recently because the traffic at the hotel has gotten crazy. They're they're too busy to take him. They don't have enough vacancies for him to park there. Let's go. And that I that I don't think is appropriate in a residential area. And this is a beautiful picture at night. But it's it's like those are a, if you can't see the road, nobody can see the road when they're backing out of their driveway. And then we have a speeding problem coming through here. So I don't know how much this happens in other neighborhoods. Last year I went and I thought the hamlet had some of the best paved streets because of the vendor we had going going out of his way to try to clear the streets. And I think there may be one more.
I think that's it.
Okay. There's one of a trash can by dumpster and then a poop canister that was out for six weeks in front of an apartment right down the street there. But I didn't throw those in. So yes, to get back, I think if if farm based code can help us limit the size of animals or at least how much green space needs to be available when a person builds an apartment. So that when he rents thirty units and they all have dogs, that he has, you know, a facility that that can accommodate the dogs as opposed to expecting the town or others to pick it up. And I know other jurisdictions that I've lived in, there were size restrictions. And then the the other creatures we need to be careful of when they build apartments or build out this high residential is to make sure there's enough green space and make it the developer's responsibility to build a park big enough for the people he's renting to in that entity. As opposed to pushing them off down the street or to the verge along the sidewalks. I I think it needs, in in the hamlet, there is there is there is a diversion, a not a diversion, there is a a dearth of space, green space for the apartment dwellers to go to. And it's amazing some of the things they come up with. I see how hockey got invented or street hockey got invented up here.
All right. Do you want to respond to any of this, Matt? Or Taylor, do you have any responses, thoughts?
I'll respond generally in that a lot of what Ron is talking about is what Matt talked about earlier. It's that the additional complexity that comes with increased density in places. So so we can see that it's already happened despite what we're doing here in the form based code. The increasing complexity in terms of snow removal, in terms of of, you know, providing public trash cans, in terms of providing public space. What we're talking about the format code has already happened in any crossing this surrounding area. You know, I think a lot of what Ron's talking about may not be directly addressed through form based code, but be addressed through other means. Sounds like you've had some conversations with Public Works that haven't gone so well.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that sounds like, you know, you know, a lot of more urban places have a public works commission that the public works director reports to that provides guidance on things like snow removal. You know, so the, you know, a commission like that may have to exist eventually in Williston. So so, yeah, just things are getting more complex over there. It's more dense. And whether we want to or not, it's already happening.
Yep.
Thank you.
Kate, go ahead. Yeah, I just wanted to echo that. I think that that happens in burning woods, which is less dense than the hamlet. It happens anywhere that there's snow. I don't think that form based code or even the planning commission is necessarily the right venue for discussing snow removal or dog. You know, whatever restrictions, because I I just don't think we have the ability to do so. That's definitely not really our.
Chapin.
Well, I think the thing that Ron and I both feel is that the streets are too narrow. And that.
It's it's the fat back.
If you think of the uses of people, some amount of private front yard, enough for their steps at least. And then some amount for walking and some amount for bicycling, some amount for walking your dog, some amount for letting your dog pee or poop and somewhere to store the snow, you wind up the more you scrunch it, you wind up creating more complexity that may not be necessary. And that the answer before was if you don't do a lot of that, then you don't get the density that will give the that'll justify what has to happen for the community to be the way you want it to be. And that's where I probably disagree with you, Kate, which is I then I say, well, why don't we put them a little farther back and make them a little taller? But the this is very visible if 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 you look at step step one, right avenue on page twenty and twenty one. On the left side, there is a bike in front of CBS and that's the existing CBS store. There is a bike share location because there's enough space in front of CBS. On the right side, there's not that same kind of space. And then if you look on the next page, you'll see that what you're seeing on the right side are small buildings that look to me like big enough, like duplexes if they were houses. They're in front of the bank, which is actually a very attractively designed bank. And so I don't understand how you would have those little tiny buildings in the corner with no parking and then a building opposite CBS and one in CBS's parking lot, which look like they're big enough to have two flats in them. And then the amount of parking that that takes up in the amount that then is put behind them. And that talk about putting backing something up that those buildings are backed up to that bank, which was beautifully landscaped and built. Oh, yeah, you're pulling it up. Sorry, it's page twenty one right there, there. So in that picture at the top is the bank, which is nicely landscaped right now and set back from Wright Avenue more than it needs to be. But putting all of that between it and Wright Avenue leaves no space on the sides of Wright Avenue for snow removal, for people walking dogs, et cetera, et cetera. And so I have a real problem. This looks to me better than it actually is when you look at the overhead view. And one of the reasons is that CBS is set back more than our street profile that we are saying we're going to use. You can see it there that it's back further. So I I have a problem throughout with the lack of setback to allow for snow removal and dog walk.
So it's not only that the streets are too narrow, it's that the the sides are too narrow.
The buildings are too close to the center of the streets.
Well, again, I mean, I guess that's one of those things that could be kind of diversified, right?
Like it could be, we talked last time about you could do one lane, one direction street, one way streets and get more space for this. You know, there's lots of things you can do. But the this this question of density towards the street versus having density vertically is to me a key issue which we haven't worked out.
But, I mean, the thing with keeping things closer to the street though, is also that it, that is sort of a you could maybe take issue with it, but that has been a sort of a an assumption about making places more pedestrian friendly is that you don't have, you have wide sidewalks, but you don't have gigantic span across the whole street.
I don't want the streets wider.
Okay.
I want the space between the street and the buildings wider.
Yeah. Gotcha. Right. But then there has to be a sort of proportional, as you say, a proportional height.
And the other thing is when you when you look at these buildings on page twenty one and you look at our energy plan, there's a heck of a lot of surface area on these buildings for each square foot of usable space. And and so I don't see this is in line at all with our environmental plan. And and to me, these are major things, just about form, that we need to get some idea of what's our goal and how are we going to get there before we can get into coding.
We just have a few more minutes. Responses or thoughts? Matt, do you want? Go ahead, Ron.
I wanted to, my understanding is the planning commission meets, I think, monthly with the Burlington City Council and to talk about various things like creating ordinances that I think originate with the planning commission. So that's where I'm where I'm the more I read about the government setup in Vermont as opposed to Texas, it's it makes sense to me in the history of planning commissions. And we're at 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 this point in time, we're in a real narrow interpretation of what the planning commission can do because we depend on professionals like Matt and Emily and Melinda that to bring a lot of the knowledge that we don't have to to the picture. But I think I do think we have a responsibility to talk about issues that impact life in Williston for every citizen.
Thank you. Yeah, I I mean, I do, I agree that, you know, if we are concerned about walkability and we're concerned about the land use of our streetscapes, then, you know, these are issues that we need to take up. I think the 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 question though is is partly about who is doing the enforcement, right? And that's clearly out of our purview. Yeah, so there's maybe a little disconnect there, but.
I would have to, I'd have to be educated on on enforcement. We wouldn't necessarily be the enforcers, but I I know there's some complex rules of how law enforcement is operated in this state as opposed to other communities that have their own municipal police departments that the state's not involved at all. So that puts a level of complexity here of what what is occurring here in Williston. But I I get your point. It's just where where there's a hole, I'm going to push back. Yeah, that's all. And and I don't mind being told, no, you can't come through that door and go just wait until next year.
Thanks, Ron.
Can I can I just address, sorry, I just want to address Ron's question real quick and and actually really Chapin's concern as well. I'm looking at the three sections again for for on this lecquer copy, you know, page thirty seven. So I'm looking at the version for for Wright Avenue and I'm you'll see there on page thirty seven, those two, three sections, one's labeled ST dash thirty eight slash eighty PD. And so what that references is essentially thirty eight feet curb to curb and then eighty feet between buildings. And so for Wright Avenue, we're looking at thirty eight feet curb to curb and seventy feet between buildings. When I just go ahead and look at, you know, let's say the hamlet generally. You know, when you go, when you go property line to property line there, we're looking at about sixty four feet from what I can approximate. So structures being about sixty.
Sixty four feet, I've measured.
Yeah, so about sixty four feet apart. So here on Wright Avenue, we're looking at a at a cross section that's six feet wider than than the hamlet. And this is a cross section that would be the most dense or the most constrained out of all these cross sections. And so we're talking six more feet. I'm not sure if that changes anyone's mind, but I just wanted to that show people that those numbers there on the description of the cross section means something. The first number means that curb to curb and that second number means from from structure to structure.
That's wonderful to hear because I didn't know what those numbers meant. Megan?
Yeah.
I just wanted to say something positive too. On on a lot of the drawings where they have the residential green, they have greens in residential areas that are often east and west. So you see the view of the mountains either direction. And those are wonderful to me because they produce, there's common space. There's plenty of green space and you it's preserving a view. And so I want to say there, it's fantastic. And I wondered if we should ask Brian and Al, since we have the opportunity while they're here. On page twenty three, there were suggestions about making some alterations to cottonwood in its next phase. And I wondered how they, if they've reviewed them and what their thoughts were about them.
Yeah, thank you. You know, could you put page twenty three up? So I'm not sure if Al's on the on the line, but.
I I am, Brian, and I've got the I've got the book open so I could make a couple of comments there.
Yeah, go for it.
Oh, so number one comment was there's a, they put a new building in the bank parking lot. And they they put a little green space behind it unless that's the, is that the little wetland pond or the little detention pond? But to put a building in that parking lot is probably never going to happen because the bank requires every single space that they permitted for. So something like that's not going to happen. Now, they also put a small building right on the front. We call that building A two, which is across the street from the bank between the detention pond and that building. You know, to have that single building up on the street, I I don't really see that happening as as well. To to put, you know, the road next to the detention pond and have a couple of buildings to the, I think it's to the east or to at least to the right side as we're looking at it. That that's a pretty good concept. You know, overall, I I think that. You know, overall, I I think that the way they've designed it is is great. I like the idea of this form-based code. I I think that it's very complicated and you guys are going to have your hands full with it. But I would, I would say make it as simple as possible, but but as detailed as you need because most developers are hiring professional architects and engineers, and each one of those architects have their own little style and and they're gonna change it up. So it's not gonna look like this. They're not all, they're not all gonna be the same, and they're not all gonna have the same color roof. They're not all gonna be the same number of stories. So, you know, overall, we like the idea of that, you know, density that you're looking for, but there there's, there's also a need for some green space. You know, everybody loves the green space, whether they have dogs or pets or not. It's it's complicated, but I I think you should leave a lot of the decision-making for the individual developers that own the land that are gonna have to maintain the properties because the snow issue is a big issue. I I love the idea of you guys wanting wider streets because most people that, you know, they're just not walking as much as we would like that the neighborhoods to be walking. There's, there's, I mean, people have to jump in their car to go a hundred feet down the street to to go to a different store or something else. They're they're not gonna walk it. But it is nice to have the wide sidewalks and 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 to see that happening. We're hoping for that to happen at Cottonwood a little bit. We've, we've kind of designed that, you know, a lot of the sidewalks there a little wider and we've put the parking behind the building so that there's, you know, they're up on the streets, but it's tricky. We will be hiring architects to to design it. So, you know, you can leave a little bit of the responsibility that you think you may have to take on yourselves to those architects and to the developers to choose because we we have to live with it in the end and as you do, but with the rules in place, we'll, we'll be able to follow those and and then hopefully there'll be a different design that everybody will will bring to the table for you guys to look at.
Thank you very much. All right, so we are at time. Uh, are there any final burning issues that anybody would like to?
Could I make? Can I make one more statement? Um, with regards to the rest of our property in the back, you know, there's, they're showing a sixteen-acre parcel for a park. And I just wanted to be on the record that we were not asked if you know, to put that in. That was just part of their design. So I want to make sure that you folks realize that, you know, sixteen acres in that commercial zone is is a, uh, it's pretty valuable and they've designed it so that we've got a road that we have to build down through. And I know, I think the page, the page that we were looking at previously was um step one. I think step two shows multiple uh buildings on just one side of that road. Well, the cost to build a road is very, very expensive. And if we're not gonna get development on both sides of that road, it it's a pretty expensive uh undertaking for any developer to put, to put a road in and and not develop on both sides of it.
Yeah, and I I would just, I'll just piggyback on that last comment I made um real quick about about the park. And we know this is like a visionary document, um, uh, that 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 plan is a sketch of, you know, what could be, it's a, you know, it's a really nice-looking plan and um, you know, just a kind of a sketch to give you a feel of how this could build out. But um, some of it felt a little specific when it was talking about um the sixteen-acre park. AMEDD even, you know, described it as a sixteen-acre park. Um, and so we were a little nervous, um, this being like an official town document to have, um, you know, that kind of called out. Um, I know it's not, um, you know, being required as part of this plan, but um when we're talking about things in, um, you know, the letter to the select board about what's locked in and what's not locked in, you know, that's something, you know, we kind of would assume not locked in, but something we could certainly propose. And, you know, we know the town wants to see a park and you know, we'll try to do something um with the rest of this project to have some open space, but whether it's a a park or a green space, you know, that's to be designed still. So that made us a little nervous. You know, just being referred to specifically in this plan.
Hey, so noted. Thank you very much for those perspectives.
Okay.
Final word, Matt?
Sure. Uh, I'll use my time to just make a couple of logistical notes. Again, uh, the planning commission will be discussing this matter with the select board next week. We think that's going to be from eight to nine P M. Um, but keep an eye out for their agenda. I'll mail, email it to everybody here to remind you. I'd really love to give the board a version of this transmittal memo uh in their packet. I'd need to have that done probably by the end of the day Thursday. I'm wondering what the feeling of the commission is. If I were to work with the chair and vice chair to to refine it a little bit and respond to the comments that I'm seeing. Um, I can circulate it quickly Thursday morning if we do that. I think I can soften the things where people are saying, I'm not sure I can sign on to that much consensus or I want, I want to be careful about this. Um, I think we could do that if if folks are willing. Um, and lastly, I, you know, we're, we are keeping the consultant in the loop about all of these conversations. Um, Jeff Farrell at minimum will be at the select board meeting next week. Um, he's also offered that any of you who have a particular issue that you're really concerned about in the vision who want to have some time with him on on Zoom or the phone uh could do that. So I'll send everybody an email tomorrow, copying Jeff and reminding you that he's available for that. Um, he's been there before. He's taken projects from vision through to coding. I think he can give you a little bit of perspective about where we are now versus what we might do as as we get into that detail, or or as Taylor was able to do with the street section on Wright Ave. Point right to and say, oh, but we have this and maybe we just haven't made the connection. So um, I'll follow up tomorrow on all of those things. Um, and then I'll see everybody in a week.
Matt, feel free to add me on to, you know, that that Jeff request or that notification that you can talk to Jeff one-on-one if you need to. You can also talk to me if you have basic questions. If we need to go pretty technical, we can go to Jeff.
One more important thing. Um, thank you, everybody, for sticking with us. I really am enjoying the process and um it's, it's tough to come to consensus on this stuff, but your engagement has been stellar through a summer we all rather just have off, and I appreciate that.
Right, here, here. Um, all right, thank you. Uh, thank you, everyone. And so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Chapin moves. I'll second. All in favor? I think everyone's in favor of adjourned, right? All right, thank you all, and uh we hope to see you next week.
Thank you.